Charge that. Keep for you to charge my.
Oh, okay. Thank you. We've got six o'clock. So we'll go ahead and call the September thirtieth. School board meeting to order. If you please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, very good. This meeting has been posted in all the normal and customary posting places. So we're moving forward to the approval of tonight's agenda.
So move approve the agenda.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of proving the agenda say yes, yes oppose say no, motion carries. Okay, now we move on to the community forum. It's a chance for the community to speak directly to the board. And let's see here. We have. One person signed up to speak. Megan Cole, would you like to speak? Okay. If you wouldn't mind coming up to the microphone, that would be great. It'd be great. Thank you so much.
That way they can get they can hear it.
Yeah, okay, I assume board member Anderson is not going to be present today. Yes, my question was for him. But I will.
Roy is has let me know that he is in Florida and cannot get back due to the storm.
Yes, okay, well, I'll just kind of pose it to the rest of the. Board and then we can always table it till next time to have Troy weigh in as well. On September fifteenth, there was a thread started on Lake Country four one one regarding several open vacancies at Arrowhead for their staff or recent resignations. And T Roy, which as we know, I think we most of us know that that's. Board member Anderson's Facebook account posted nothing wrong with a much needed house cleaning at AHS. And many AHS feeder schools. Congratulations and thank you to the board members and administrators that have already done it. Or are planning on cleaning house in our district. So as we think about another agenda item that's on the later in the today around building trust. As we think about the code of ethics that our board members have. I'd like an explanation for what this post means and how that represents this board in this district.
I would just start off with saying I can't speak for Troy. This is the first that I've heard of the post.
I mean, that's fair. That's why I wanted to.
I think truly it's again, from a standpoint of a. Speech aspect, he wasn't speaking on the as a board member. I didn't hear. That he was saying as a board member. Again, it's that would be something you'd really have to take up with Troy.
True, I understand. He didn't, you know, say he was officially conducting business or making comments on half of the on behalf of the board members, but. The words that you all make and including him publicly are a reflection of this district, right? And of of the board, whether we're saying it not truly. Accounting for that in our statements. So it just. I'd like an explanation. So I'll bring it up next time then when Troy's here so we can we can talk more about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that is all who signed up. Would anyone else like to speak tonight?
I do.
If you state your name for us.
Yes, hi, Ashley Renz, a parent in the community. I don't expect we'll solve it tonight, and I don't even know if it needs to be solved. But I know one thing that we are trying to do as a district as part of the strategic plan is to improve the communications with parents and the community. Some of those have included streamlining communication with Dr. Russ one time a week on Sundays, which I think is great. The one thing I did notice and was pointed out is that the board packet, which was individually sent historically via email is now included as part of the Sunday communication. So I know you were forthcoming with that. I just want to say I have some concerns with that, just because I think it's important enough to be considered a separate communication. Again, I'm not saying you need to make a decision on it, but as one parent, just kind of my perspective is that. Sometimes things fall into the daily operations of the school and the kids and the academics and the school board side of things might be important enough to. Pull out of that and continue to be on its own. So just something to think about.
Thank you.
Ashley, can I ask?
Yeah.
Does the timing matter? So before you got it on Thursday before a Monday meeting is a Sunday night before a Monday meeting a concern?
Yes, I think because I believe and I'd have to look to make sure I'm correct, but previously the board packet was going to be. Subject to change up to 24 hours prior to the meeting, right? And I have worries that. The timing between a Monday night board meeting and a Sunday night communication, if that's the first notice parents or community members are getting might not give them enough time to reach out. In the event they wanted to be placed on the agenda for delegations to be heard, for example, so. I now have it on my calendar as a tickler to take a look at it because. You know, I'm involved and I'm aware that this is happening, but. It would be something to think about.
So.
Thank you for the feedback. Does everybody understand what she was talking about there? Okay, all right, thank you. He you may so so. We have streamlined district communications to make it one email. Per week, so it's not this one off from Mr. Blessington, Mr. Newcomer or myself throughout the week or at different times. In the past, I have sent out a specific email to our entire parent community. Hey, here's our board packet. For our meeting on Monday. This past. This past for this September meeting, I told the families that on Thursday, the board, the meeting packet will be posted by four o'clock. So I didn't send out a special email at four o'clock on Thursday, highlighting it was posted to our website or included it in a specific link. And then I sent it out as part of the Sunday communication. So what Ashley's feedback is is. She would like us to consider this to be a very important thing. That would kind of break away from our try not to inundate parents email boxes with district communications quite frequently, so.
When was it posted on the website?
Thursday by four.
On Thursday.
Three thirty, three thirty, so. So we fulfilled our promise, what we said on Sunday or a week ago. So and just sending the reminders like that too. So. I can take that feedback back and talk to our team because we have been pretty, we've tried to hold that line. Instead of getting.
Yeah, I dropped Ron a note.
Yep.
On Sunday night, Sunday night. To say, you know, pop it on our Facebook page too, so that. I'm one that gets enough emails during the week. I don't need to read my email.
That could be something that's very simple to do. Put it on our Facebook page to say, hey, here's our board packet. So then it's not inundating anybody's email. I think that we can we can start with that. As well too. So it's another modality to remind people if they're part of that feed, so.
That's all like what works for people, what doesn't. So it's a testing phase. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you. Appreciate that feedback. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you for that. All right, we're going to move forward to approval of the consent agenda. Super motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion this evening? Okay, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda say yes, yes, pose say no.
No.
Okay, motion carries three to one. Okay, moving forward to delegations to be heard. Do not think we have any delegations to be heard tonight. Okay, so we're going to move forward.
Perfect. I would like the board to or to.
Yep, so administrations report now, yeah.
We'll go to billings and grounds update and we'll invite this researcher to come forward and school board wanted to go to the audience.
Good.
Or you may want to go to the side.
All right, so we came up with a little slideshow or I came up a little little slideshow to kind of highlight some of our district projects throughout the summer. And things that have been going on, so. Just for those of you who don't know me. Yeah, thanks, Ron, for doing that. I'm Jordan Zersher. Yeah. So my name's Jordan Zersher, and here's a little information about me. I graduated Arrowhead High School in two thousand and four and right when I graduated. I started working for a family heating business and I also worked for Myers Electric out of Wales. So prior to joining the school district, I was out in the mechanical fields. And then I married my high school sweetheart in two thousand and nine. And I have three kids which are all currently enrolled here at Merton School. So I'm pretty sure my wife's watching right now, so hopefully these dates are correct. So I also was a part of the strategic planning committee this year, which was a new experience for me, so that was kind of cool. Since I've joined Merton School District, I've received my universal refrigeration license. I studied and passed turf and landscape pesticide exam. And I just recently finished my Wasboul facility manager course certification, so. Moving on to the next one. Yep, it it took a couple of years, but here are the details of the Wasboul certification. There are eight modules that are listed up there. I'm not going to get into them, but. At each conference, I took place either one or two of the modules depending on the conference. There was either one or two modules per for each conference, so it took a little while to to get the certification completed. And this is why it took two years. So Mr. Netashine back in two thousand and fifteen, the previous B and G director, he also completed the program. So my official graduation will take place at Wasboul at the Wasboul Spring Conference next year in two thousand and twenty five. So Wasboul facilitates a few custodial conferences in the summer, and this is an opportunity for everyone to expand their knowledge. In the areas that they work in. So for example, Anthony on the right there, that was a picture we took at one of the conferences in McGowanago. So Anthony, Jody, Mike and Kirk focused on bathroom cleaning and floor care. While I was focusing on equipment upgrades, turf management at this conference that we went to here on the right. So this can be done at the same conference. The picture in the middle is the fire extinguisher training. So they light a fire and then you got to put it out with the fire extinguisher. So all of our team tried it out and. Wasboul does a great job, and I just want to say the district does a great job supporting professional development for the staff as well. So moving on to projects. The boilers, the school district was able to complete. Or was able to replace a three point three million BTU. Seventy percent efficient boiler from the nineteen seventies with a new two million. BTU ninety six percent efficient modulating boiler. With help from the Merton School Board's approval on that. So here's a size comparison between the two. I took pictures before and after. The one on the left obviously is the. Three and a half million and then on the right is a two million, but when you look at the efficiency levels. They're almost actually the same output of BTUs. You're just not wasting all the fuel on the right. So. Moving on, then the next one, I got some landscaping items in here. So on the left, we got mulching in house allows everyone to work together as a team and saves costs comparing to outsourcing. This year, we were able to use a bed edger from the company that does our lawn cutting. So thanks to him. It turned out really nice edging the beds this year. That's something that we never really had done.
Big shout out to Mike Betta. Who realized that our high school kids don't know how to run a bed edger. He took it.
Yeah, he was cranking.
For the next couple of days, but he did.
Yeah, he did a great job.
Yeah.
So then on the picture on the right, there is the bloom sprayer on the Kubota. I just wanted to point that out because. The approval on the Kubota as well as this image just shows that we do our herbicide spraying in house. Which saves quite a bit of time and we're able to do it on our schedule. With taking in account the weather and student activities as well. To be able to spray the pesticides usually on weekends when no one's around. So moving along. This was a smaller project that was done out in the MAA concession stand. The ceiling was originally drywall with peeling tape joints and paint, as you can see on the left there. So Hayden Russ and I removed the fluorescent lights and installed some white metal roofing. This metal will probably most likely last the life of the building, so we also installed some new LED lights to save energy. And the Merton Athletic Association actually financed and paid for the upgrade, so a special thanks to them for doing that. So this was a big one. This was the biggest project that Merton School has ever done in house in the ten years that I've worked here. This project consisted of replacing two large rooftop units at the primary building. And between those two rooftops. At the primary, it controlled twelve classrooms in the E section, and they were originally installed when the addition was built back in two thousand and two. So we replaced those. That was a. We had a whole semi load of counterweights on the back of the crane to be able to lift it off about a hundred eighty feet away. It was so. Or one seventy five, it says on there. It was a heavy unit. So then after setting those two units. In the morning, the crane moved over to the intermediate and we replaced two ten ton rooftop units on that building as well. This was all done in one day. The two units that we set at the intermediate were eligible for a focus on energy incentive. So on top of saving the money of doing it in house, we were able to get money back from from that incentive as well. So here's a couple more pictures. So on the left is a removal of the unit. At the intermediate building out front by Main Street. In the center is a picture of Hayden Russ. He's getting ready to install the fresh air economizer. On the second floor, science room unit, you can see the filters there. The economizer sits in front of that and brings fresh air in. And then on the right is a picture of John Netashine. So John and John asked if you could stop out and help and he we said absolutely. So a special thank you goes out for him to him for spending some time here and volunteering his time. So we appreciated it. Yeah, ours is cooling.
And then also thank you to Sprung. Sprung had a part in this too.
Yeah, Sprung did have a big part in it because just with the timing on the refrigeration. So we had to have that. We had them come out to help us out with just the reclaiming because it just took so long that we ended up. Working with them on that. So. The next one. So there's been a step in front of the boiler room door forever, which made it difficult to move items in and out. And we had to transfer fifty fifty pound salt bags by hand onto another pallet and then pallet jacket over to the softener. So we came up with an idea and said, why don't we have a ramp here? So that's just what we did. So we cut out and jackhammered the old step out. And if you look at the picture on the right, about two minutes after that picture was taken. Kids were running out of the building. And I realized the fire alarm was going off because of the dust from the saw got sucked into the boiler room. Setting off a smoke detector, so. Mary wasn't too happy with me. That was.
We practiced our fire.
Yeah, so camp and benching, camp and benching got the do a drill on that day. So.
And I'm still curious about how come the old guy was doing the song.
Well, I don't. I'm trying to think of who was with me on that at that point, who was taking the picture? Someone had to take the picture, right? So moving on, here's a picture of concrete getting poured on the left. That we called in and then on the right is a picture of Anthony helping out texturing the concrete with a brush, so. I always try to get younger employees involved so they know. How certain jobs are done, what they're ran with the forums and everything. And. It also builds morale when they're part of big projects like this, so. That helps out. So here's the final product on the left and on the right is a picture of the forklift now in the boiler room. The boiler. The pump getting removed or the forklift is in there to help us getting a pump out. But there's a skid in there right now and that. If you can see the valve on that far left pump, it shut off. That pump was leaking, so we're in there with the forklift right now, trying to get that pump out of there. Because it was leaking, so. And then the next one right here, I just threw this in there. It's a picture of the repair done. This is just a drywall repair in the manufacturing room. We originally cut it out to run wires and pipes underground to the maintenance shed. And having said that, the picture on the right. Is some pneumatics that were added at the same time. So what we did is while we had the trench dug to the maintenance building, we also ran a three quarter inch PEX line. From the compressor in the shop underground all the way into that classroom. So that way there isn't a noisy compressor running in the future and that there isn't any noise in any classrooms in the area. So. It's running out in the shop instead of in in the building, so. That was an idea we had as well while we had that trench. So that's it for now. And then I just wanted to say I'd like to thank the school board for their support. So thank you for being a part of the board and thank you for your support with the approval of these projects throughout the district. There are a lot of improvements that happen behind the scenes that directly and indirectly affect our staff and students. So your work is appreciated. I really appreciate that. So thanks, guys.
That's it. Thank you. Very, very good. So any questions for Jordan at all? Board members.
Thank you so much for sharing all your hard work and all the different hats that you wear. We appreciate you.
Yeah, thank you very much for that. I appreciate it, you guys, so.
Well, we got a list.
Yeah.
We just figured out a couple of smaller projects, whether it be flooring projects. We forgot to put that up there with the flooring stuff.
There is. There's so much. I mean, I could talk all night about projects we got going on. There really is. There's always stuff changing and. With two buildings or three buildings with counting the maintenance shed, you know, there's a lot. There's a lot of stuff to keep an eye on and. Take care of, so.
But like when we need to replace an RTU, we have. Thirty of them, almost thirty of them in the district, correct, Jordan? Twenty four?
Twenty four.
Twenty four, twenty.
Twenty.
So we know we can do that in house and just.
Yeah, there's twenty five, but there's not a thirteen, so.
Oh, okay.
It's twenty four. So.
But we'll 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 keep bringing your projects. You don't need to worry about that. They do comment on how. Yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And that that's it's a whole custodial team.
Yes.
It's Kirk and obviously you saw some of our high school kids. Really, really do work really, really hard and really well. Like should have been.
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate that. We try to stick to what we got to get done and make it happen, so.
Appreciate it.
Learning wire variety skills.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I I love doing it too because you can see the appreciation that they have when this is done and. Just amazed on certain things on how they turn out with the concrete and stuff and the process with reinforcing and forms and pouring it and. Where are you going to get it? And if you need so many yards, you can't call a major truck in and. There's a lot of coordination and stuff with everything we do, so thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks, Jordan. Good work.
Yeah.
And then so next on my part for administrators report, just wanted to. Again, per DPI and state statute, we are. Required by law to highlight our seclusion and restraint from a year ago in the month of September, so. At Merton Intermediate School a year ago, we didn't have any seclusion or restraints. At Merton Primary School, there was one child. Who was secluded restraint, so that report is in the board packet and fulfills that. Part of state statute, so the other update, the the open records requests have all been nothing out of the normal. The the normal monthly stuff or little tiki tack stuff that people want to know. You know, nothing big, nothing that we've charged for or anything else like that, so.
Nothing outside of my normal.
Nothing outside of your normal one, Justin.
All right. Okay, on the committee reports, Ron?
Sure. Yep, so. Our student achievement committee met and Maria Kacharsky was unable to be here this evening, but. Ultimately, you see a whole bunch of of. Updates there, continued improvement update. Basically, we reviewed. The student pillar side of the strategic plan, which will be presented a little bit later, so the student achievement team went into that a little bit more. We also had a district data dashboard, which is updated. Again, you'll see that. There are a lot of pieces missing yet. Next week, actually, we get a sneak peek at our report cards, the state report cards this week, I do believe on October third. And then October eighth actually is the date where the state releases the forward scores. So Maria did talk a little bit about some of that data. It was re referenced, re normed. And the cut scores did move. A little bit. Not only did they change the names of the proficiency levels. There was a change in the proficiency scores, so. Basically, across the state, you will see a significant increase. Over what occurred the year ago. We had a new test for both math and ELA, and at that time they kind of made new cut scores about what was proficient and what wasn't proficient, advanced or. Whatever the two new terms are as well too, so.
Developing.
Developing and then approaching, I think.
It's no longer below basic developing and approaching.
Yeah, so. So again, more information on there, but again, you will see some information coming out from there when they release state scores. We can do some of our comparisons and then we'll update that dashboard too as well. And then we kind of summarized our summer academy. Again, this year we had twelve participants. And again, we had some really good feedback. One of the pieces that we. Or I'm sorry, the new teacher academy, the new teacher induction had twelve participants and a lot of feedback. Very positive. We continue to want to make that a great onboarding experience. And a big thank you to our new staff. As well as a lot of our returning staff because we will pair them up with a with kind of a mentor or a grade level peer. Where they do a lot of work during that time too as well, so. Our summer academy feedback, we talked about how we can possibly get some. So we do ask our staff to reflect and give us feedback. This year, we didn't get any. Literally, there isn't a single survey that got was that was collected, so we we kind of brainstormed and said, hey, it's one of the things that we're going to ask them before they leave this session. Can you please give us the feedback so we can continuously improve on that too as well, so. Just a lot of information, you know, moving forward with that too, so.
Run for when you get the information to share with the families about the test scores and that type of thing. Does that will that be part of your Sunday? Communication that comes.
Yeah, that'll that'll be part of Sunday because the eighth is a Tuesday or Wednesday. We'll want to kind of put out a big communication on that. Probably with some comparison data and stuff like that, updating our district data dashboard. And that does take a little bit of time from that standpoint too, so but we'll probably highlight this upcoming Sunday to say, hey, look for that. Put it on our Facebook pages or whatever it may be too, so yeah, because we're really excited about that release. We really are.
Okay, thank you. Anything else for Ron? Good. All right, let's move forward to new business. The discussion on the twenty four twenty five strategic plan, action plans and key performance indicators.
Yeah, so again, just wanted to present this to the to the full board for for a discussion, the student achievement committee, and again, you. Was very active and we kind of reviewed what that was. In summary, there are three pillars that we would be working on for some action planning. The the first pillar is for the students, again, a lot of curricular act twenty. A lot of improvements, you know, bringing forward with the Merton values. Again, you'll see some performance indicators there from the forward, from some of our growth data, from. All sorts of different areas from those indicators there too as well. So again, mostly focused around. Curriculum, instruction, assessment and student growth in those areas. The piece that for the next pillar would be the staff experience. And that staff experience truly focuses around building trust. Continue to build trust amongst the administration and the school board and. And again, just trying to make trying to move those needles in that positive realm, and we would assess that through our school perception survey. Which will be coming out a little bit later. In October, in the middle of October from that standpoint. The other big lift for the the staff experience would be the compensation review. So again, I should preface it by the student or the. The. Strategic planning committee did give the administration some recommendations on what to work on this year and so forth. And one of the biggest things that came out of the staff one was is a review of our compensation and benefits, so. So I will be putting forward a team together. We'll be using our local data as well as forecast five. To gather some other comparables, taking a look at as many comparables as we can, whether that would be for support staff. Teaching or administrative staff too as well, so. A a full review, ultimately, that would be then presented to the board for further discussion because ultimately, as we saw last month. Our budget is almost seventy five percent. Compensation and benefits. So it is a huge part. About what our district budget is too as well, so that is pretty much the biggest heavy lift from the staff experience standpoint too as well. The third one is built around the community experience. Again, really trying to again, we'll be continuing to survey. We'll have that school perception survey go out to our families and that will happen again in October, a little later. But the biggest thing we want to do is is continue to engage our community and showcase the great things that are happening, so. The biggest indicator there or action step is to create a district newsletter three times. A year that we go out into all the mailboxes into our community to continue to. Spread that information out and then work continue to work on the communication as Ashley highlighted too as well. Again, streamlining it, I do want to say thank you. There has been a lot of feedback. About even how do we make that communication better, whether it be for format or, you know. For catchiness, you know, I've got a lot of marketing people who are like, hey, if you, you know, so. Given us some good ideas that I'll work with the principals and our administrative assistants on too as well, so. So this is kind of our guiding work. For this year, our two principals, Mr. Newcomer and Mr. Blessington, who are here along with. Mrs. Rhodey as well are tasked with many things in this as well, but ultimately you'll see. Mrs. Rhodey as well are tasked with many things in this as well. Um, but ultimately, you'll see it's a shared experience. There is a lot of shared, whether it be with our, our Merton values teams, our culture teams, the guiding coalition teams. It is a very tight work, uh, place where we really wanna go. Um, one of the pieces that came up at our student achievement committee meeting was, all right, after this year, what's next? So our administrative team is going to be kind of forecasting some things out too as well. Um, and hopefully to have that in October, uh, November-ish to say, hey, this is where we wanna be year two, three, four and five, because. The team, the committee has given us all sorts of things that they would like us to think about it, but ultimately, it's about capacity. And about, you know, how do we make sure we tackle what we can at the appropriate time moving forward to as well? So. Um, big thank you to our strategic planning team, our staff, our administrative team. Um, as well as the student achievement team who spent a good half hour on this too as well, uh, for giving some feedback there too. So. That's kind of the, the ins and outs of it.
Ron, what are you planning on those newsletter updates? Do you have it?
Um, hopefully one will go out at the end of October, um, beginning of November, because one of the pieces is the budget. Again, as, as our taxpayers are much more in tune now. Um, would love to include some tax information, um, ahead of that newsletter. So. Cause it's that kind, you know, hey, so when you see your bill, this is what you can expect. No surprises. Again, we do expect everything to drop, so it'd be a happy surprise, but ultimately trying to communicate that at that time. So it'd be in early November after we set the levy.
After we're done getting all the political mailers that we get.
Yes.
Fifty a day.
That's a, correct.
Let's wait till after.
After the election.
Doesn't get lost, right?
That's a, that's a good point.
And are you looking for a, a late winter and end of year, what kind of?
Yeah, we're looking at a November, then probably a, a February one, and then that end of May is where we would go there for some celebrations.
Um, what kind of feedback have you heard from employees about the, your KPIs?
Um, you know, I, I think they've been shared out. Um, we have a big thank you to Ashley and. Um, Melissa Museo, who also came to the staff and kind of outlined it too as well. Um, again, our building principals continue to lead those discussions. In, you know, within their teams from that standpoint. Um, I know people are very excited about the compensation review. So that's something that's been kind of ongoing. And again, we're gonna drive it with data and showcase. What other people are doing and then ultimately, we're gonna have to create something. That is sustainable and affordable for us too, but I feel very strongly that we're gonna be at a good place.
How will you, what process will you use to pick your team for that pillar?
So what it will be is, is it will more than likely be a, a voluntary basis. Um, asking for people why they feel that they should be part of that team. Um, we want a diverse team. We don't want all veteran staff. We don't want all new staff. We're gonna need. Support staff, custodians, you know, professionals, administrators. Um, it'll be very similar to, we'll, we'll kick it out. Why do you feel you should be part of this team? And then we'll have to go and put a diverse team together.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, any other discussion there? Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
All right, moving forward to, uh, approving the sixty-six oh-three with Arrowhead Union High School for math teacher?
Yep. So again, this is something that we've been doing, oh, for probably twenty years now and. Um, this year, we have Mrs. Fulton back with us, uh, Naomi, who has been with us for, Steve, is this our second year right now? So, um, this allows our students who are accelerated in mathematics, double accelerated actually. To be able to gain and earn that geometry credit. So, um, again, Arrowhead apologized for coming out a little bit late. But, uh, again, this is pretty standard stuff. Again, we do share the salary, no benefits. It's just truly a salary. And we, uh, reimburse Arrowhead for them paying Naomi. So. Um, again, just looking for a motion to approve the sixty-six oh-three agreement with Arrowhead High School to share Naomi Fomi, or Naomi Fulton as presented.
So move second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the sixty-six oh-three with Arrowhead Union High School for the math teacher. Any discussion?
So we've been paying her in the meantime, right?
No, Arrowhead has.
Someone has been paying.
Somebody has been paying. Somebody has been paying her, yes. Yep.
And how many students are on? Are we talking about?
Nineteen? Eighteen, nineteen, somewhere around there.
Okay, so pretty full.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a full class. It certainly is. Yep.
Awesome. All right, any other discussion? All right, um, all those in favor of appro- approving sixty-six oh-three with Arrowhead Union High School for the math teacher, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Oppose, say no. Motion carries. All right, moving forward to a, uh, continued discussion about how the district can build trust with all stakeholders.
So that was my agenda items. Uh, we've been having this conversation for about a year. We started this conversation last October, well, maybe last October or November when we got our. School perceptions data back. And so.
Sorry, I think we skipped.
My mistake.
Okay.
Time to take her back. We'll come back to it. Yeah. Oh, thank you for catching that. So.
I thought I put it ahead of that.
I was ready to go and then I was like, wait.
I'm excited to get to journeying. So, all right, so, uh, old policy deletions remaining. And outdated policies to be deleted. So this is just deleting.
Just deleting, correct.
Say motion to delete old policy four thousand eight, or do I have to read each policy?
I would like you to read each policy, please. Sorry, Nicole. It's the last time I'm gonna make you do that.
If anybody else wants to do this, dude.
Let's go.
Are you okay doing it?
Okay. Brought it this far. All right. Motion to delete old policy four thousand eight titled vandalism. Every citizen, you want me to read?
That's been recommended by them.
Every citizen of the district students.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Oh.
Here you go. This is what I want you.
Okay.
I was like, oh, no, we don't need to read the policy.
Do I need to withdraw my motion or no? Cause it wasn't second.
Nope, no.
Motion to delete policy four thousand eight vandalism that has been recommended by the administration and provided to the full board for its consideration and action.
We have a motion and a second to delete policy four thousand eight vandalism. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of deleting policy four thousand eight vandalism, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Oppose, say no. Motion carries.
Motion to delete policy four thousand eleven telephone services. That has been recommended by the administration and provided to the full board for its consideration and action.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to delete policy four thousand eleven telephone services. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of deleting policy four thousand eleven telephone services, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries.
Motion to delete policy five thousand four point one reading specialist job description that has been recommended by the administration. And provided to the full board for its consideration and action.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to delete policy five thousand four point one reading specialist job description. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of deleting policy five thousand four point one reading specialist job description, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Oppose, say no. Motion carries.
Motion to delete policy five thousand five substitute teachers that has been recommended by the administration and provided to the full board for its consideration and action.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to delete policy five thousand five substitute teachers. Is there any discussion? All those in favor to delete policy five thousand five substitute teachers, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries.
Motion to delete policy five thousand seven point two district secretary job description that has been recommended by the administration. And provided to the full board for its consideration and action.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to delete policy five thousand seven point two district secretary job description. Any discussion? All those in favor of deleting policy five thousand seven point two district secretary job description, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries.
Motion to delete policy five thousand seven point four. Maintenance full-time regular job description that has been recommended by the administration and provided to the full board for its consideration and action.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to delete policy five thousand seven point four maintenance full-time regular job description. Any discussion? All those in favor of deleting policy five thousand seven point four maintenance full-time regular job description, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Oppose, say no. Motion carries.
Motion to delete policy five thousand seven point five non-certified and certified instructional aids job description. That has been recommended by the administration and provided to the full board for its consideration and action.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to delete policy five thousand seven point five non-certified and certified instructional aids job description. Any discussion? All those in favor of deleting policy five thousand seven point five non-certified and certified instructional aids job description, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Oppose, say no. Motion carries.
Motion to delete policy five thousand point six computer teacher job description. That has been recommended by the administration and provided to the full board for its consideration and action.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to delete po- policy five thousand seven point six computer teacher job description. Any discussion? All those in favor of deleting policy five thousand seven point six computer teacher job description, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Oppose, say no. Motion carries.
Motion to delete policy five thousand seven point eight food server job description. That has been recommended by the administration and provided to the full board for its consideration and action.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to delete policy five thousand seven point eight food server job description. Any discussion? All in favor of deleting policy five thousand seven point eight food server job description, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Oppose, say no. Motion carries.
Motion to delete policy five thousand eight qualifications and duties of bookkeeper. That have been recommended by the administration and provided to the full board for its consideration and action.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to delete policy five thousand eight qualifications and duties of bookkeeper. Any discussion? All those in favor of deleting policy five thousand eight qualifications and duties of bookkeeper, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, say no. Motion carries.
Motion to delete policy six thousand nine student conduct on school buses that has been recommended by the administration. And provided to the full board for its consideration and action.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to delete policy six thousand nine student conduct on school buses. Any discussion? All those in favor of deleting policy six thousand nine student conduct on school buses, say yes. Yes.
Yes, yes.
Come and vote, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, yes.
Okay. Oppose, say no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole.
Okay, now we're ready to go to the party.
Yes.
Over to you.
All right. So as I was saying, we started a discussion a little over a year, well, maybe a little under a year ago. About how our trust numbers between community and employees and the board and. Superintendent are not at the levels that we'd like them to be. And so we had committed to having ongoing discussions about how we can improve trust in those areas. It, I'm glad that we'll still be doing the surveys and such, but if we're not talking about how we do it, it is less likely that. We will be attentive to how, because it's an active process, something that we do. So I wanted to talk tonight about things that we thought we were doing that. Were improving trust and things that may have happened or things we were doing that we think may be lessening trust. So I'd start with, let's start with what we think we're doing that's improving trust.
I feel like the five of us communicate well here. Um, respectful, um. Respectful to one another, um, to each other, to, um, our community members, staff. Things like that. I feel like that's continued and has progressed.
Some more respectful communication between ourselves and with our community members. What else are we doing that is, we hope is improving trust? I'll say the, uh, planned communication with the community and letting them know that there is a plan to. Increase and what types of information that is, particularly when it comes to. Difficult conversations like taxes is something that I think will help to improve our trust going forward. So I'm glad to see that, that is part of our plan. One of the things I want us to remember is trust doesn't make everybody, it's not things that you do to make everyone happy. It's what you do to make everyone informed. Um, and so. Things that I think that we are not doing as well, unless you have other things you wanted to share, you think we are doing.
Yeah, I'll just, I mean, Ron, a lot of our discussions are surrounded around these types of topics and Ron's been very open to. Feedback and things that, um, I've shared and that other board members have shared. And I think that's super important that he, uh, that you're doing that. So. Uh, can, continue that work, I think is, is fantastic. And, um, I think it's less about us and more about the staff and. You know, what you guys are doing inside your buildings that matter more than anything. Um, so let's keep, keep doing that. So we're. You know, a non-issue, but once a month, that's kind of my goal.
So from, from that standpoint, I'll be doing, I've already offered a thirty-day check-in with all of our new staff and several of them have taken me up on that. Um, going to be, I'm, I'm trying to be more visible. Thirty minutes a day is my goal to, in, in each of the builder. Between the buildings, um, as well. Um, I know we do have from a board level standpoint, we do have a policy and personnel be reaching out and setting up a meet and confer session. With the staff, invite them in. Um, that's scheduled three times a year, uh, and that'll be coming up in October. I'll be working with the policy and personnel team to be able to do that. Um, and then I will be going around too and inviting myself or asking teams to invite me in. To talk about the operational stuff, about how we can, you know, continue to meet, you know, their needs from whether it be the human resource, the business standpoint, uh, you know, buildings and grounds, working with Jordan and. In our teams about what's going well and what's not going well too. So. Um, so I really appreciate some of the feedback that the board has given me with that too as well, because. That is a KPI for, for, well, my name's on that too as well, about trying to move that needle with our staff. So really trying to. Uh, put some things in place myself, you know, and working through our teams to be collaborative there too as well, so.
Could you share some examples of visibility? It's, this is not a question of me deleting it since people are watching. They have some examples of what that means.
So what that means is, is, and it was interesting, Steve even asked me today or on Fridays, like, my staff's wondering, why is Ron around so much? You know, it's like, well, what's he doing? You know, is he evaluating? So, so what I'm trying to do is, is trying to be able to go into classrooms. And not be, well, hello, Dr. Russ, how are you? You know, and can I help you with something? So just kind of make it. More natural. So just kind of, you know, again, a touch point for staff. Um, today it was a great example. I walked into and I'll just say there was some, some, two, two of our staff members who were collaborating over a student who was struggling. Um, I was part of that ten-minute conversation with those two, two teachers. It was awesome. It was really awesome. So we had a great time there. Then I went down and I'll just say, well, I talked to Mr. Fleishman and we had a good old conversation about the Brewers today. So, you know, so just really trying to, you know, get out there a little bit more, um, you know, and be visible. Um, you know, stopping in, uh, I was in Mr. Blessington's third grade team meeting. The other day, you know, we had some great feedback around that. Um, sent off an email to their team leader and saying how impressed I was with that, with what she was doing too as well. So. It's intentionality, trying to get me. Out of the office and from that business mode and, and into our classroom so our teachers can see us more too. So, so that'd be an example there.
It sounds like it also is a benefit to you is that you're getting to enjoy some parts of the day that. You don't necessarily get to enjoy when you're behind the desk.
Yep, yep. So some of the business stuff will wait. We'll get that, to that a different time. And again, just trying to. Be out there so it's, so when, when things do pop up or whatever, you know, hey, Ron, can I grab you? Well, what's going on here too? So.
I'm happy to hear that. Uh, what about things we think that we could be doing better or improving trust?
I think there's some items that get discussed. Before the meeting by board members. It's kind of apparent. That all our business, because we're a public school board, has to be done around this table. And so that is a issue that comes up that I think we lack trust in.
And then has someone confronted you about that? Or do you have an example or?
I do have an example.
Okay.
Annual meeting.
Okay. Uh, I was not there.
Yeah, you weren't there. Uh. Nomination of the chairperson, we had a motion a second. And then all of a sudden, there's a motion. For another person to be the chairperson. And it kind of just, uh, slid into. A conversation with another board member. That seemed like that was set up before the meeting.
I will say that in, apart from that example, that it is one of my frustrations with our current board is that we are very respectful. But we also really aren't discussing very much. So I try to give some context or reason. As I'm speaking, for the purpose of transparency, for this is not because we all agree with it, but to say, this is why I'm thinking this way. When we look to build trust in organizations, that helps people to understand where things are. They're not guessing, well, they approved this or they didn't. But I don't know the why. So as they're preparing for their next initiative or what their next ask is going to be, they have a sense of the why behind that and. And I've missed a couple of meetings. So, uh, my watching of them, I don't, I have not seen a lot of this going on when I'm not present either, but perhaps I didn't hear it as well. Is that I. Is that I think we can be doing a better job in our discernment as a board and I don't see that as much going on between us. We don't have a lot tonight on the agenda to be discerning, but when we do, being able to have that conversation is. I guess my addition to having those conversations in front of everyone, we're supposed to be able to. Share that information about why we are thinking the things we're doing and why we're doing the things that we're doing. So that's a frustration of mine that. I also hear from some community members is a frustration of theirs. They hear a one word answer, but they don't understand the why. So that's something that I think we could be doing better. And previously, we practiced a little bit in our previous board and it's something that takes time and practice to do. I think sometimes we're not transparent because we're worried about looking rude. We can have a discussion about the issue respectfully. But we should be having that discussion, that discernment and. It isn't always a fast process because discernment is trying to make our way to the best decision possible. And I think we can do a better job at that as a board.
Yeah. So I, I mean, I'm not in disagreement. Is there a situation you can think of where we're not having? A discussion that you felt could have been deeper in that standpoint? So I, I view it as represented with information. I do most of my work prior to the board meeting, discussions with the administration mainly, mainly through Ron. So that I'm prepared to come here and take a vote.
But the board isn't just to take a vote. The board, board is also to discern what the best way forward is. So something I was particularly frustrated about was the strategic plan vote. So it's a three, two vote and the two voting, no, you being one of them, didn't provide any reason for the no. Between June and the vote and. Once you were elected to the board, so in May and June, you're asked if you had any questions about it, the board, whether the strategic. Committee was there and available to answer those questions and we didn't get any questions. From you. And so when the vote came up and there's a no, that's very surprising to me because if there had been something that you wanted to discuss, that's what we wanted to discuss. We want the community to have the confidence that the full board supports the strategic plan going forward. So that when people are coming up with their KPIs and are getting ready to ask for resources. They feel that it's likely that will support them. So that was a example of something that was very frustrating.
Yeah, I totally, totally understand your position. I guess I view, I, I don't view disagreement or a split board in, in a negative way whatsoever. And. Again, I do a lot of my work with Ron. Through discussions I have with Ron.
So, but the part of I discuss with Ron, that doesn't help us figure out how are we deciding as a board? So I don't necessarily.
My personal view as. I am able, right? And how I vote.
So it sounds to me like you're not interested in the process of the discernment. You know, before you're coming in.
Not at all. No.
Okay, then you are interested in the process of discernment.
Yeah, there, there are certain.
How can we participate in that better together? We're not now.
I feel we have robust discussion on. And there's some topics I don't think necessarily need to be.
So I also am concerned with the, and I talked to Ron and I talked to Ron answers, because that also puts Ron in a difficult position. Saying you've talked with Ron, we're trying to have discernment. So it either says that Ron has to say. Everything you had a conversation about when that shouldn't really be his position. Now you should be able to speak to. Why you've made those decisions. And I don't like seeing that particular part of it. I think that's. Not something that he would necessarily be prepared for, nor, I mean, we all meet with Ron. That would be a whole lot of information. But I meet with Ron to help myself understand situations so that I can have these discussions. I do that to prepare for these discussions. So I would like to see those discussions happen more often. That would be helpful to us, I think. And also, the community sees us discerning. They see us working through the discernment process. And discernment doesn't mean that we all end up on the same page, but it does mean that I understand how we got there and that then informs the next time we speak.
Yeah, I, I, again, I don't disagree that. Discussion's a very productive thing at times. And again, I don't think the result of a vote means that there wasn't. Discussion that occurred.
There wasn't any discussion that occurred.
That was, the, the strategic plan was a very long process, right?
Yes, which is why I think that we were looking for. Information about after that long process about which you had no questions about along the way. Why you would vote no. So that's the discussion that we were looking for, that, that I was looking for.
Fair enough. I wouldn't, I, I won't question people's votes on this board. You guys can vote however you choose to vote. I think it's important that. We all do that. So.
I, so I. Not questioning a vote. Is that important? Tell me a little bit more about what you mean by that.
I, I just won't question people's votes. You guys should vote, but if you feel it's important, right?
So you have no interest in understanding why I vote the way I vote?
In certain circumstances I may, right? But I think in this situation, it passed, right? We spent, I think this is the third discussion where time has been asked, but it passed, the strategic plan passed.
It passed, but it did not pass with the full board with no explanation.
I feel like we're getting off topic here.
So my.
We're trying to build trust.
In building trust is we can have these conversations and letting you know that to build trust with our community. The, having those discernment conversations in public is one of the ways to do that. I would like to see us do that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, we keep saying the term in public. I want to be very clear, discussions that, that we have, I, we do have them in public. Right? They're happening in public. Whether or not you like the amount of discussion that, that occurs, it is happening in public.
It is. I would like to see there be a higher quality of those discussions, which involves more of the discernment process. That's what helps to build trust with your community.
Very.
Any other?
Anything else on this topic? Proceeding into this topic?
That was my primary issue. I think that through transparency is how we work to build trust with our community and build that level.
I feel we're a very transparent board. That's my position. So. Have anything else?
Moving forward to future meetings and agenda items.
Yep. So October twenty eighth. And thank you for pushing that to the very end of the month again, because we do get some pretty big factors tomorrow. We should be getting. Our property values and then as well as October fifteenth, we should be receiving our state equalization aid. So. Putting that all together and maneuvering what needs to. So if October twenty eighth still works, that would be fantastic.
For me on my calendar. Works for me. November eighteenth.
For twenty eighth, we good? Okay. Okay, for Justin, he's.
Eighteen?
Or twenty eighth, twenty.
Twenty eighth is good.
Twenty, yeah, twenty eighth, twenty eighth.
Sorry.
Is the next month.
Twenty eighth is. Yeah, twenty eighth. So also in October. Just so we know, we're going to have, obviously that's the really big, that's our budget. That's where we set the levy and stuff like that. Throughout the month too, we'll be bringing the finance committee to, together to kind of review everything and what we want to propose. Moving forward and we'll have a policy and personnel committee as well. For some basically just focused around staff interaction, you know, meet and confer sessions too as well. And then we'll be bringing the student achievement team together to discuss the data dashboard and some of our forward scores. Have a discussion around gifted and talented programming. So again, it'll be a heavy committee month moving forward too as well. The other piece too on the twenty eighth is, is we'll be probably bringing forward and, you know, continue to have conversations. About a new, possible new piece of equipment, our new Bobcat, a possible trade in of our old Bobcat for a new Bobcat. Again, I continue to build that capacity with the board, just making sure that we have the proper equipment. To make sure that we can maintain and continue to move forward with that too as well. So. And I'm sure there'll be a few other budget or a few items on the agenda that will come up too as well. November twenty eighth, if we could scoot to November.
November eighteen?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, thank you, not twenty eighth. Again, this year we do not have students in school the week of Thanksgiving. So that's why I'm kind of, instead of doing the last Monday of the month, since our families may be traveling because there is no school. It's happening in a week earlier. If that works for everybody.
Eighteenth does not work for me. Girls' basketball game that night.
Okay. Is there a different? I mean, we can do it the twenty fifth.
Mondays are the only nights that work for me.
I can do the twentieth.
Anything about the eleven? I mean, it makes really no difference to me. Unless the twenty fifth, we can go to the twenty fifth too. It's just not real convenient. I mean, I don't know.
I can do the eleventh or the twenty fifth.
I can do either.
I could do the twenty fifth. Twenty fifth.
I make Mondays available.
Twenty fifth, we knew twenty fifth.
So we're moving November eighteenth to November twenty fifth.
Twenty fifth, okay. And then the December meeting. And that's just the Monday before our holiday week where we have no school.
It's good for me.
Again, we can, we can come back to that in October too as well, but that's the date that we would be targeting. The other conversation I wanted to have with the board with about our future meeting and agenda items. Is, is just wanted to make sure we wanted to continue to do student showcase, if that's something that we are interested in. And I'm seeing some head nods there as well, but also wondering if we wanted to have a, a principal report. Again, the report would be led by Bob and Steve, focused around our strategic planning work. In the work that they have with their teams and things like that. Again, student showcase is right around that ten minutes, ten to fifteen minutes, and we would do that at the beginning of the meeting. The administrators reports or our principals reports would happen, you know, towards, you know, in the middle. It obviously would be a ten to fifteen minute presentation approximately. And just kind of looking for if that's something that the board would like to kind of have brought back. Obviously, it's just some time and prep and getting some things organized, but it would focus around the strategic plan, what, what them and their teams are doing. You know, to kind of give the board an update in progress monitoring towards some of those KPIs and those action plans, if that's something that. The will of the board again, just wanted to see if that would be the, the board.
I think it's a very good idea. A lot of things about the strategic plan, we've all got all the curricular pieces. It's great to hear from the people who are doing it.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay, all right, okay. We will bring that back too as well. All right.
Can't wait to hear it, you guys.
Yeah. So we'll bring. I think we had a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Any discussion? All those in favor to adjourn, say yes.
Yes.
Yes, oppose, say no. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.